My name is Victor C. Chavarro Sr. Last name is F.A.V.A.R.A. I'm a senior resident in the Town of Portland. Moved into the Town Apartments fifteen years ago because it had facilities here that my children wanted me to get rid of my big house and move here. I've been from Waukun. I've been involved in the town and in the planning and zoning and building committees on the different structures of our educational system in Waukun. I have a problem trying to digest everything that has been said here today from the different boards that are represented. Not much I can hear that gives me an idea of what it's going to cost me as far as taxes are concerned. How much is the town going to have to spend to accommodate this facility? I remember the last time that this property was discussed at a town meeting was that the town would have to increase the road size of the intersection as you come off the bridge. There was a discussion of putting roads in between the gas stations and when you turn onto sixty-six, there was that area there that is now congested to such a point that at certain times of the day, the traffic has backed up quite a distance in two directions because there's only two directions to that bridge. There's Route sixty-six and the, what's it, Seventeenth? I, because I'm a senior citizen, would like to know, what is this going to cost me? I'm living on a fixed income. I don't have enormous savings. So every dollar that you spend that I have to replace, a portion of it, and your taxes on my property, I'm already spending over four thousand dollars on taxes on my property, which is like eleven hundred square foot home, and my condo fee, and whatever else happens in my community. I don't know if this is being considered in your thoughts and in your development. I mean, the people that want to develop this, it's a business to them. It's more than a business to me. It's more than a business to these residents. Some of these people are from the community that I live in. I live in an elderly community. I want to know, what is it going to cost me? I don't have that many more years to live, maybe. If Mother Nature likes me and smiles at me now and then, I may live a lot longer and be a pain now and then. But I've been doing that for a good many years. This meeting, in a way, I'm glad that it's being held and that the community and the people have decided to come and see what your people are doing.
Good, good to have you.
I don't see much progress. What is it going to cost a town to invite these people in to make that development? That's bills, that's money.
Those are all things that are certainly valid for answers. We're not going to answer them tonight, but we certainly are taking notes and it'll be part of the furtherance of the questions and answers that we'll be able to use. Typically, developers pay for quite a bit of what you've mentioned there, but I can't say that tonight because we don't even have an application of them this evening. But typically, in reviewing many of the planning and zoning applications that come through, and I think that our town attorney can attest to that, developers are required to put up money for certain aspects of your development. But I'm not going to get into any further answers to that because there is no development plan that I can address, and I have to be careful.
I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I've heard a few things that I'm going to be very honest with you. My wallet shivered. And what went through my head between these two Italian ears, okay? You don't like. So be thorough.
I wrote it down.
Be thorough, be effective, and when you hold the meetings, these people are not here to listen to you talk. They're here to find out what it's going to cost them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next row. Yes.
I just want to say, you know, some of the things I've heard today, Ben especially, your comments, I mean, a hundred percent, I support what you're saying. I was at some of those, the BCI meetings.
Yes.
I was at some of those meetings, what they wrote in the report, and I read it too. I remember that because I was in one of the quotes that people talked about that, that people felt really strongly about not having really dense housing in that area. So that and your other comments, and then Michael really supported your comments as well. I think it's going to be really thoughtful and should tell your comments about being careful about making a change. We absolutely need to be careful not to move to someplace where you can't take a step back later and kind of get caught.
Thanks, Tim. For the next row, next row. Yes, Alan.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Alan McKittrick, Two Thirty-Five Middle Town Road. Also, I really urge everybody to take a look at that page sixteen of the BCI report because Ben's right, high-density housing is on the list of things that you all said you don't want to see on that site. But there are fifteen other things ahead of that, including big-box stores, prisons, casinos, a whole bunch of things. So, you know, it's hard, I think, for developers to come up with the right mix of things on that site. And I hope that you can add my, as this process moves forward. So don't forget, take a look at that page sixteen of the report.
It is on the town website. Thank you, Alan. Next row. Do you live in Portland?
I don't, I was just going to say.
Can you keep your comments to a minimum, please?
How about fifteen seconds?
Say we have your name?
Catherine Johnson.
Thank you.
Second town planner. I'm by number from Middletown. I think, I think what people can see on a site like that are pieces of Portland that they love and adore and want more of. One problem with hearing two-hundred-and-thirty-eight units is that all of a sudden you have this wave of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight units all over a site. I think you should have very specialized rules, which I happen to actually write for living. One type should be no more than forty percent of the site. So you can start to have what you have in Portland now, which is a whole mix, two-family, three-family apartment buildings, but not a whole site covered with these four-story things that people already see and they see in other places in the state. Let's make more Portland important.
Thank you, Catherine. Bruce?
We're talking a lot here, I'll be very brief. I just picked.
George.
George, over. All right. Really, we see a plan, everybody's here is guessing about what's going to be built here. What we need to do is get a plan, look at it, and let's do that before we make a text amendment. Because once we make a text amendment, we can't go back because people have already said, let's get a plan, let's look at it, let's sit down and discuss it so we can talk about it specifically. Are there two better units? Are there three better units? Where are they located? How is the building, how are they built? Where is the parking? We can look at it, we can have a discussion with the information in front of us. Right now, we're all guessing, and we're wasting our time here. We're asking you, we need to get the plan and then make a text amendment if anything takes place.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone in that area? Thank you. Cheryl?
Cheryl Silman, Thompson Hill Road in Portland. I'm not for high-density housing, you know, and the tax, I understand, you know, that that's changed, but everything, just to shift a little bit, I haven't been really involved to be a little more positive. Happy kids who have graduated from college and have moved out of town, some live here and some don't. But there's really no place for, like, apartment living for this late-twenty, early-thirty population that's very contributing, that's very involved, that loves Portland. My son is actually director at the fire and sea aid campaign or so, who has done a lot with us, but he doesn't live here. And as far as the rent, when you're saying, you know, the rent is a thousand dollars or four, and the median income is much higher someplace else. But these kids are paying that and earning half that amount. So if you don't have children that are out in that market, and it's too bad they're not here right now, but there's a need, and they would support downtown living, they would walk down the street, they, you know, my family is, like, so big, and you've got to stay in Portland and support your coffee shops and your restaurants and this. So just from the positive side, let's think about younger generation. I mean, we're all aging, that is how it opens. Well, we're all going to be gone, but what happens to these kids who went through the Portland system? I would like to keep more of that.
Hi, Cheryl. Next row, yes.
Bottles, Twenty-One Plum Rose Court. Very quickly, I agree with the speakers who have said, let's get a plan to look at, something concrete, and not just shoot for the dark here. I don't think we should look for residential development to solve our deficit problems with water and sewer. Those things need attention on their own very quickly. The value of our homes is going to be affected by what takes place in this development, just like the values of our homes are affected by all the parking on Main Street that we see. Real estate agents direct people into town through Blastenberg so they don't have to take their prospective buyers through some of these things. So we have to be careful when the plan does get developed on Melkress that the parking is screened and landscaped so it doesn't become another junkyard. And I, the financial analysis that is developed on both, I think that is, you can't do anything this scale without doing your own.
Last row, Paul. Anybody in the back? Okay, so this, okay, yes.
Hi, Kayle.
Hi, Betty. Road. I just want to say I totally agree with Ben, Ryan, and Michael. Absolutely, I think we need to totally check things out, and I actually agree with Ben even lowering the tax, lowering the amount of apartments. I think two eighty to three hundred apartments in that small space, and what you need more stores and more places to go and more business taxes rather than burdening people with taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll start in the back, the kitchen area? Sorry, there's no food. I didn't have any food tonight. Anybody in the back? Okay, we'll move forward, yes, sir.
Eric Kelly, South Road. The developer can put anything he wants up there about what Townout West, what they're doing in Blastenberg, what they're doing in Middletown, they're building those apartments in the middle of, I don't care. This is Portland, this is where I'm a taxpayer, okay? They're a developer, pays for their financial gain, do they have the best interest in the town? Is that where their interest lies? I don't think so. All right? I'm all for the developer of the property, but I don't want to see the town rush into something that happens to be repercussions that we can't recover. I don't think anyone in this room disagrees with me that the finances now suck. The state is going to give us less money. So I'm in the position where that property's been vacant for, since what, two thousand and?
Eight.
Okay. I'd rather let it sit there like that than rush into something that's going to cost us money. So again, like Bruce said, we don't know if there is a residential plan. I'm urging the board not to make a tax change until there's a solid plan in place. Because if they do, it's a disservice to us, the taxpayers.
Thank you. Everybody on the back, in the corner? The next row up? Andy?
Hi, Amy Bauer, BAU Eden Park, Two Five Six Old Marlowe. And first of all, having said those cheers and various others, my appreciation for all the work that we don't even know you've done behind the scenes, so thank you for that. I'm a little ignorant here, so maybe for the benefit of myself and for real, what is, can you spell out for me, please, what would be the path going forward? So you've heard comments, now what happens, and what happens after that?
The chairman of planning and zoning.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Microphone, please.
This is going to make me very unpopular, but you can't.
Michael, can you pick up his microphone?
Hold it for me. A whole place.
You can't have a plan unless you can have a text amendment which allows that plan to be developed.
Could you explain that? Or maybe Carrie could explain that? Do you want Carrie to explain that?
I don't, I, in other words, developers, individual homeowners, whatever, take a look at a property and then decide, what can I do with that property? If there is, if there is no text amendment, or in this case, the previous text amendment has been approved, then that's, that's it. We're done, there's no conversation. But if he wants to make a change in the text amendment, he can't, well, it would not be smart for him to develop a plan unless he saw what he could build there. If he doesn't know what he could build, why would he do it? Think about it, it's the same, it's the same way with the rest of you too. If you, if you don't know what the property is like, you don't know what you can build there. So he looks at a completed text amendment, in this case, that has been approved, and then develops a plan which meets the specifications of that text amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not get involved in financial analysis. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a land use commission which deals with health, safety, and property values. It doesn't deal with profit and loss. So it's not to your advantage to ask for that because I'm sorry, even though I'm unpopular for saying this, but you, you can't, you can't get a plan in advance of, of a text amendment or, or planning and zoning regulations.
Carrie, do you want to add anything as from a legal perspective to the town?
I would, I would agree.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Sure.
Carrie Olson.
Good evening.
She's our town attorney.
I would agree. As a practical matter, most developers want to know what the regulations allow before they spend money developing a plan. But there, there is the ability to develop a plan and to come before the commission with a proposed text amendment that would suit their plan. So there, there is a way to do that. I will agree, though, most developers would prefer not to because it can be expensive.
Yes. Any developer could do that informally. So he could say, you know, or she could say, let me, here's what I have in mind, what do you think? And we could talk about it without any formal application. I'm talking about, once a formal application is made. So, and, and much of what we do is directed by state law. It's not like we decide for ourselves what we'll do. It's, it's state law that directs most of our behavior. So unfortunately, you can do it informally, or you can do it, informally, or you can do it formally. If you do it informally, then it's, it's what she says. If you do it formally, then it's pretty much, here's the, here's the, here's my plan, what do you think of it?
Carrie, did that answer your question?
With respect to, I, really, I guess what I'm asking is, I know we have this text amendment, does the board know?
There's no amendment that's been proposed yet, but that's a contemplation, right?
All right, and I understand, you know, I've heard my neighbors speak, and it seems that there's a lot of concern about the amendment. Okay, so we all go home tonight, what happens next, next meeting? Does our developer prepare another text? No, I'm just curious as to what would happen next, that's all.
Thank you.
This is a guess, it is, you know, okay. What probably will be happening is, our, the developer has provided us with a draft text amendment that he would like to have approved. We have looked at it and have decided that that's not completely acceptable to us and we'll have to make some changes in it. We're going through the process now of deciding what those changes might be. There are, there are two kinds of changes. One, one kind of change is to tie the commercial development with a residential development. In other words, they have to be done at the same time approximately. They don't get certificates, I'll try again, certificates of occupancy unless they both go at the same time. That's, that's one of those changes. We have said, pretty much, not formally yet, but pretty much, those two have to be tied together. The second one is how much residential property will be allowed on the site. And we have, we have, as far as I know, no opinion on that, other than three hundred is probably too, too many. What, what the real number is, I haven't got a clue. We'll have to talk it over. We're going to have to listen to you, whatever you'd like to say to us. You come to the meeting, we, when we talk about it.
Is your meeting April?
When is our meeting?
April seventh.
April sev, our meeting is April seventh. Yep.
Bruce, could I suggest an alternative?
I don't know, can you?
What, what I would suggest, as, as a prior applicant of an extremely controversial application in front of the Planning and Zoning for a text amendment, I added automotive uses to the IP zone years ago, and it got a few people's feathers in a ruffle, but it successfully passed once they got all the proper information. And I'd like to be clear, I was the applicant. I was choosing to change a regulation in the town of Portland at my own cost, I paid to change it. The difference we're seeing here, and I, this is where I'm going to then ask you a question at the end, in this case, you're getting a suggestion from a developer who may want a regulation changed but wants you to pay for it. And when I say pay for it, I mean the town of Portland residents, there will be a cost to us doing it this way. My suggestion to you, and I'd like some feedback from the entire board, if you would, is that we, we just simply let the process take its course by, if the applicant, or if the developer chooses to apply for this himself, we then would listen and get whatever information we would need at that time. By going the route we are on a controversial situation, it puts the town in a, in a bad spot, essentially.
This is, this is very boring to most of you. I, I understand that, it's how this, how this process works. The developer asked us to do the text amendment. We suggested he do it, he suggested we do it, we said we would. And the reason, the reason we said we would is because we have control over the text amendment. That is to say, it doesn't have to happen at a particular time or a particular way. It just has, it may not happen at all.
You have control either way.
We're not going to get into too much because I want to make sure that other people with gems to speak.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Anyone else?
I just do want to say.
Jim Starbuck?
Sure, go ahead. Jim Starbuck, Forty-Seven East Main Street. I really have a question. There is a plan that's out there as of the Fourth of last December, three months ago, that's posted on the Melkress website, and I wonder, I mean, that's a concept analysis. It shows about twenty housing units per five thousand square feet of retail, which is completely in conformance with BCI, it's right in the middle of the neighborhood. And that was adopted by the board last July, so, and I'm not recommending that, I don't. I think that overall, way too ambitious for this site, and probably fail, but that's just personal opinion coming out of the hill. But I do want to say that it seems to me that that concept is in complete conformance with what the town approved last July, and he had followed up with our, it seems to me that the developer is juggling stuff to try and make this work. The BCI reports say that this is not economically viable unless you have that kind of housing mix. We as a town have to think about the fact that we want this to fail, and how far are we willing to go? What do we really want? These are big, big questions, and I don't pretend to have answers. I am concerned from a preservation point about the ongoing deterioration of the property there, and that definitely should be neglected, is one of the things that preservation will deal with all the time, and that's got to be in the mix as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the lower, this side of the room? Ah, yeah, Carrie.
Carrie Clint, K.O.S.E.K., Cox Road. I just have a couple of quick questions. I just want to make sure that I understood Michael correctly, when you were alluding, you were saying that there was approval already or whatever, it's in the zoning plans or zoning regulations that there could be a forty thousand square foot big box building there?
On this, on this site with other development up to sixty, everywhere's a town forty thousand square feet.
Okay, so is it, just to, for a visual, because I have no clue what forty thousand square feet looks like, is it like Triton Plaza? You were talking about a grocery store, Triton Plaza or Triton?
Double sided Triton.
Of the grocery store portion or the plaza?
Triton is how big?
No.
Big chart?
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand. If you've been to the Spasm Shop in East Hampton?
Yeah.
That's sixty thousand square feet. That's the store that was going to get built in Portland, we passed a regulation of forty, and it got built out there in between when I said we passed the forty thousand regulations. Then when we came back and came to the plan development, that store was already the worst. So, you know, as a town, it's fine, we're sitting here killing ourselves that, why isn't the store coming? The store got built.
That's okay, they can have it because from what I hear, they don't like it there anyway, so, I mean, we would either.
But unfortunately, it's a basic need, and we all get it somewhere.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
My wife drives to East Hampton or Middletown.
Just not too much of that in form, like.
She goes to.
Any other?
I don't know. She goes to Triton too, right?
I don't own Triton.
All right, all right, you know, really, really well. Carrie, do you have any other questions?
Just, please excuse my ignorance. How, how does this actually overall end up getting approved? If something goes through, it, it seems like it would be a feasible project, is it approval just by you guys or is it a referendum?
Carrie, I'm going to have our town attorney answer that question.
I don't know if I know the specific question, are you talking about the text amendment? Are you talking about one of the developments?
The development.
Okay. Well, right now, there is an approved, Carrie, could you please take?
Sorry. Right now, my understanding is there's an approved site plan and development plan that has not been implemented, as selectwoman Bransfield told you. If a new plan comes in, it would have to go before. If a new plan comes in, it would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There would be an opportunity, because it is a special permit use, for public hearing and comment. Um, there are statutory guidelines as to how they process that application and deadlines for public hearing and rendering decisions. Um, and again, you would have a public forum. Um, there's also a rate of appeal if you don't agree with the ultimate decision. Um, but that's, you know, they'd have to comply with the regulations. Uh, my point is, is that while it's not necessarily financially a benefit to the developer, there are ways to come in and have a text amendment and a plan approved at the same time. You have to structure it correctly, because again, you've got statutory deadlines. Um, but it can be done. It's just, it tends to be a lot more costly for the developer, and most of them do not like to go that route because of the fact that it costs a lot to develop a concept plan, so.
Carrie, any other?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Marc?
Norm Moore, 54 Lake Road. I'd just like to bring out the point that, yes, the developer has a lot of costs. And he's looked at his own personal financial cost. But this VCI report was paid independently of the owner and the developer. I thought that gave them a great opportunity. Somebody else paid $50,000 for that study. So, I don't feel too bad if the developer has to put in a little bit of financial aspect to help us along too. We've done our side. Thank God to the special committee that worked on that. We've already contributed a $50,000 study to them, for their benefit also, as well as ours. So, working together wouldn't be so bad from their party to know what they want. And I agree. What have they looked for before we change our tests? Get a feel from them also.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi Cindy. Cindy Adams.
Cindy Adams, 35, 70 Drive. What, what I'm understanding is that the, um, developer does not like what we approved of last year. And he wants to change it.
No, no, I wouldn't say that's accurate, no. There was nothing approved last year.
Well, yes and no.
Are you referring to the original approval of the site? The 82 homes and the 150,000 approximately square footage? Okay, I think that's what she's referring to.
Oh, from 2000. Bruce?
Different developer. It, it, it's our.
Same plan.
If he, if, if he wants to build the one that's already been approved, then he has the right. He can, he can do it. I mean, you know, let him go ahead. But I, I think he probably doesn't wanna do that. He wants to do something different. And what he wants to do is enough different that he'll have to get, uh, apply, make a new application and, and get a new plan and go through that process.
And if the developer was a block, the order of 40,000 or 50,000?
It's, what Michael's talking about is a $40,000 grocery store. And then a whole bunch of other commercial properties. Uh, he says there, there are six. Uh, so it, let's make believe it's 100,000 square feet. These plans don't call for 100,000 square feet of commercial property. They call for a lot less and call for more residential property. That's enough of a change that the Planning and Zoning Commission would have to see the whole plan all over again, rather than just say, go ahead. He wanted to build what, like a six-story apartment building, the previous developer.
I wanna make sure that we keep this as public comment, which is what we had. I don't wanna get into too many answers and questions, 'cause honestly, I don't know that, that we're prepared to have all the answers. But certainly those questions can be asked, and we'll do our best to get a thorough answer. Um, just to, to summarize, the site application that was made in 2009 is approved. It's not chosen to be implemented. And what Bruce says, here, if there's a big enough change, that it would not be that amended plan, but rather a whole new, correct Bruce?
That's right.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate the reference to President Lincoln's Giddingsburg. I guess I know, teach my kids 272 words, so I'll stay below that. I guess my point here is?
Name and answer.
Oh, Michael LeDolce, 47, Blackberry, Great Room. Uh, so I guess here, the character of the town of Portland is right here in this room. And I think the concern that we have is to preserve the good and healthy character of the town. But one person we haven't heard from is the developer, and I think you and I gave a willingness to say something with time.
Yeah.
I guess what I wanna say is, what's the driving force behind this proposal, this charge? I don't understand the demographics, the economic changes that happened in Connecticut seem at least to maybe to favor something different than what you're opposing. What am I missing?
Um, when you mean the change, you're alluding to?
The original plan.
The original plan to?
The, we're working on it now?
Okay, sure. No, I'd be happy to. All right, so, can everybody hear me all right?
Name and address for the record.
All right. Dan Bertram, 50 Newtown Road, Danbury. Um, can I turn since most of the people I'm gonna be addressing are back here? So, good evening. Let's start with that. Um, we came onto this scene over a year ago and looked at this site largely because I have known Fred most of my life. So it's a relationship. I have a skill set as a developer. In looking at a project that was proposed, probably originally conceptualized in 2008, but then applied for in 2009, the context of what seemed economically feasible was built upon a different set of assumptions. So, it would be lovely.
Were those pre, those pre-financial meltdown 2009, right?
No, that was post. It was just, it was really, first signs of meltdown on Wall Street in summer of 2007 became super obvious by the end of 2008. And, um, so you had a proposal coming in, in the context of an economy that was clearly impaired, but no one knew for how long. So, I'm second generation in the real estate development business. My father's rule of thumb was always that the longest you'd ever get really shut down on, on production, because you could kinda go back and forth between apartments, condominiums, different types of asset classes, would be 18 months. And this was fundamentally different. I mean, this was, this was completely different, what happened in 2008. Almost all product types went by the wayside. And for several years, the concept of new development was just ridiculous in the state of Connecticut. Now, I don't think that the fundamentals have massively improved overall. What you have is a situation where, in this prolonged low interest rate environment, you have a different return expectation from institutional investors. And so what that has done is it's brought certain asset classes into favor. The brutality of all this financial change, right? Like, it has killed the housing market, the single-family market in Connecticut is dead. The condo market is dead. You have people in a much greater proportion renting out of necessity versus by choice. And so, that sort of feeds the whole thesis behind apartment development. Now, as I sat here today, I'm happy to be speaking at the end of the night.
I just wanna be sure everybody can hear Dan.
Oh, can you? Should I hold it up a little?
I think it's a little better.
Oh, oh, okay. Wow, I, now I can hear me. So, okay. But this is good for me to speak at the end of the night, because it gives me a chance to listen and find out what's on everybody's mind. It's also good to be able to, um, describe what our process is, 'cause you asked me the direct question. So, we came into the site largely based on a personal relationship with Fred. But relevant skill set, he didn't just go around asking the guy in the bar, right? I mean, we, we, this is what we do. And so, we came into a situation where the state had recently allocated the $50,000. And that started a process that is extremely unusual to both come into the review of a parcel with this third-party contracted to take a holistic view of the development potential of the same thing you're looking at as a private developer. So, I don't think I've ever done that before. And so, we came in and, and, you know, democracy is messy. I mean, this is, this, you know, we have, we have, we have fear that the apartments may be low-income. We have fear that they may be too high-priced. We have all kinds of things going on in this general discussion. And you try to synthesize it, and it is a process. So when we came out, we actually, um, one of the first things we did is we came to the Board of Selectmen in February of last year. We actually made an application for a deferral of assessment increase that, in, in our view of the world, was a way of figuring out what the town's appetite for development was. Some towns, come hell or high water, want to stay the way they are, period, right? And that's a fair question for us to ask when we come into a community. We say, well, what, what would you like to do, right? Because nobody really wants to spend a lot of time, you know, asking the girl out who just thinks you're, I don't know, you're, you're, your teeth are too big, you're too, you know, or, 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 you're just, you know, you're not her type, or whatever. You, you, you start a process of working together, and you try to gauge the synergies on the front side. Now, we had a, um, a positive vote to empower the town first select one to enter into an agreement, a tax agreement with us. It wouldn't be that hard to guess which gentleman had voted against. There was one guy. And, and that's fine. This is democracy, right? You talk through it, and you try to figure it all out. But in the 13 months since, the town's been empowered to, to proceed with the tax agreement on this. Um, but we understood that this was maybe gonna move a little more slowly because there was this VCI process that was being administered. So we didn't quite come running out of the gates the way we normally might. And so we, we kind of waded through that. They came to conclusions, first driven by a market analysis. And the very first public presentation they made is, here are the asset classes that have some strength in the state of Connecticut right now. And they identified multifamily housing as one of them, and specifically apartments. And that became a building block for what was many meetings. So we watched and saw it evolve and effectively, um, didn't say much, 'cause we thought this was a public process. And, and I see faces from, from that here tonight. So, when the report came out, and then the Board of Selectmen, um, voted unanimously to endorse it, and then the new plan of development came out, um, following up on that, maybe the girl likes me, right? Maybe there's a fit here, right? That, this is, this is our side of it. So now, as we roll forward, and we get into the process, and people talk about what pieces can precede others. You know, everybody's basically got a valid point tonight. I mean, from their points of view in terms of what's appropriate for the town. But you can't do anything with a pure democracy, right? It's just impossible. You, you, you hire your leaders, right, to administer a process, and, and you effectively have these types of meetings. And you figure out if something basically tolerable and hopefully desirable works for everybody. So we're now, yeah, go ahead. Sure.
Just wanna put a point in this.
Please.
Your proposal is based on the economics of today, right?
Yes.
Certain asset classes today.
Yes.
So if the town wants to preserve something for the, something better in the future when asset class returns change, why don't we wait for something that's more tolerable to what the character of the town is?
The town, the town can collectively decide to do that.
In favor today versus something that may change five years from now.
Well, things always change, right?
That's my point.
So, no, 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 but it.
Pick a development that best fits the character of the town, and we gotta wait a year or two, or three or four, five, four. That's better for the residents, maybe not the developers.
Keep this at a minimum.
Okay, sure.
Like, I can't have the whole.
No, no, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, but I, but I think that, that, and I, and I agree, we would, we would be here till midnight. But the idea, I'll just kinda try to sample that. There's a fit or not a fit, right, between a party that says, here are the things that we are the decision-makers on. And when we're talking about a plan, there's a plan. We're not just randomly out there marketing a fantasy. We have a hope and expectation that that's an approvable plan, and we're trying to get tenants for the commercial side of the plan that was up on the screen earlier. So, from the standpoint of, um, answering every piece of it, that's why essentially, um, it's, it's impossible to have everything worked out before you, uh, make any decisions. It's a process. It's why we asked for a, for a vote on, on the tax incentive on the front side. We haven't effectuated it, so it's, I mean, it hasn't gotten there. But then the regulations for the, on the zoning side of things, it's an indication that the town would like to see development. When we ask a town to be an applicant for the regulation change, it's not to save the, the pittance of investment that it would take to be the applicant for it. It's to have the town indicate that they even want us to be there, okay? If we're not wanted, then there's no reason to be here. There's no reason to invest in a development plan. I'll tell you what I like about the project, 'cause I think this is probably important to, to hear about from the standpoint of trying to make the decisions, not just from the perspective of, well, wouldn't it be nice? But what can be done here now? And so, on the backside of the VCI process, we pulled out some findings that we thought that were, could be accommodated in our development plan. And we used a certain process, 'cause there's, we haven't talked a lot about historic buildings tonight. But one of the things that we got a sense of was that the historic buildings were very important to the town of Portland. So, in looking at the original plan, and my review of the site, the Brainerd House, I think, is a gem. I mean, just a great, great building. And so we took a step back and said, wait a minute. If we were looking at this and having to recalibrate everything for the economic needs of the day, how would we embark on this process? So we did that. We basically said, okay, we're gonna keep the Brainerd House here, and we're gonna bring it back. What does that then logically mean with the rest of the development? And it required us to change the entrance. It then opened up and brought forward a very nice way of transitioning uses from commercial out towards Main to the Brainerd House itself, which then becomes sort of an amenity to the residential. And then the residential goes over as you go back to the Houses of Perry. So, the idea of this being a, um, something that the developer just, you know, in some smoke-filled room is dreaming up some money grubbing plan, that's just really not how it works. It might've been the old-school process, but it's not how anything gets done anymore. I would say that, um, it's, it's just done working with the community. It gets done standing up here, listening to everybody else, but also, you know, at some point, talking about it. Like, here are the things we considered. We put the Brainerd House at the front of this. This was called Portland Town Place. We're calling it Brainerd Place. We're really trying to highlight something that we feel was really special. From there, we're trying to, I used to say Connecticut was not growing. It's shrinking now. I mean, it's hard to make something actually pencil out. And so when we say, okay, we have a component on the retail side, and then we are the decision-makers on the apartment complex side of things, because you can't forward rent an apartment to somebody two years out, right? When you're making the investment decisions to bring it to a market. You basically have to decide, there's enough demand to make. You basically have to decide there's enough demand to make it work and pencil it out. So, when we then pro forma it out, and we're talking about the tax incentives and things like that, that all goes to the historic building restoration, the specifications in the apartments themselves that get you at a price point where I can, I can empirically prove why the rents can be at a certain level, why low-income housing is not a, a, a fear that needs to be applied to our proposal or anything that we would develop here. And we can also talk about how it's an enabling mechanism for historical building conservation in terms of some of these financial incentives. It's all woven together and it's a puzzle. The biggest thing that we've asked for from the town of late, because we are over a year into this process, is to have something measurable that gives us the confidence to continue to invest in it. We have a lot of people working on this. I mean, when we're bringing in partners from New York and they're, they're bringing in their retail brokers who are regionally connected, they're going to all these trade shows, they're pitching this. Everybody knows this project, by the way. But there is a credibility problem about whether or not it's gonna get built and whether or not it can get started. And we're trying to slay that by starting the project, by saying that if we have a path forward, that we'll start spending money out there. I believe that we'll fill in the seventy-five thousand square feet of retail. I can answer your question, Sarah. The, the town of Portland's actually got a pretty high mill rate. This will not make the mill rate higher. This project will not, even with the tax incentive. Because it's incremental revenue as it gets built, it starts contributing to sewer and water expenses. People have cars, even the renters have cars. Those cars get taxed. The people who live in this type of housing don't have a lot of children that they send to the local schools. There are statistics about these types of products and what the, the family structure is within them. So, the idea of a Class A apartment complex with two-hundred-and-forty units with another seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial, with the Brainerd House brought fully back with the Sage House left in place, um, those are the core building blocks. We took each one of these things that we heard from this VCI process and tried to integrate it into an actionable plan. But we won't get anybody on the commercial side to sign up for, do we think that they can deliver any space in the town of Portland in a timely manner before we just go another town down the road? If we don't have some measurable progress, right? And so, the tax amendment changes that we asked the town to make involve maybe four sentences in one section. We asked for another section to be struck because of the fact that we said if we can start the apartment complex and we get just onesie-twosies on the retail side of things, the others will come when the actual job comes to life. We have, you know, we have a discussion to have along those lines. But the idea was to say, show us you'd want us even to be here. We felt that the regulation changes were consistent with the VCI report. And frankly, at, at this point, um, we're ready to do a project if the town wants us. If the town doesn't want this, if the, if the collective will of the town is to see what's there and just leave it there, that's fine. That doesn't, I don't have a role in that, right? I, I, I can't really influence that. I can say what we thought when we looked at it and made our proposals and have worked on this for over a year. But, you know, I really don't want to come up here and be the bad guy. I, I actually view myself as a good guy, right? My kids do too. My wife sometimes thinks that. But, you know, the point is that there's something here to do if we collectively can get on the same page and do it. And I think that the project that we are building in, I'm partial to that, but I think it's beautiful, right? It's got granite countertops and maple cabinets and all kinds of lovely things inside the units. And so, from the standpoint of like our, taking a considered approach to making something nice, we haven't even gotten into the things that you talk about in a site plan application because we're just trying to say, does she like me, right? Do I want to keep going out? And maybe someday we'll get married and have kids. I mean, this is the process we're in. The next involved piece where it gets highly detailed, where you say, okay, what's going on in these apartments? Where's the pool gonna be, right, for the, you know, to amenitize this thing? And what's the external character of the buildings that we're proposing? The facades where we say, ah, you know, there was something really cool about this building here, one of the ones maybe we're not bringing back. And we can let it live on in some of the architectural features. That's where this progresses to where we work together to get something that's right. So, when you come in off the bridge and you come to the site, you say, this is really cool. I think this represents the town of Portland really well. And frankly, that's what we want to do. We don't want to be the guy who, you know, everybody hates while they're, you know, going out there supposedly making a bunch of money. Those days are long gone in the state of Connecticut. You're basically grinding it out, okay? So, if we can get a project built and all work together, then we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to keep, keep going out. I know that analogy might not be great, but it is how I see these things. So, if there's anything I can answer, I, you know, certainly after this process is over, I can hang around and talk to anybody who'd like to talk to me. But I wanted to give some sense of the process from our perspective.
Is it appropriate after to come up and speak to you personally? Dan, that'd be fun.
That'd be fun.
My goal was to have everybody finish by nine. We started about five after seven, so I think we've done fairly well. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Is everyone in favor?
Aye.